Seventeenth. Uh, I'll take a motion on the minutes when you're ready.
How many motions in a second minute?
Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
Can you change your corrections? All right then, all's in favor, right? All's in motion, eh? Super. Gavin, you're voting for TC tonight. How's that? There's a deal I had to make.
The committee didn't count, or...
Um, so we're gonna begin the public hearing for, uh... For Arthur Kelly, for a condition use permit for a... Where's the, uh, packet? It was a little bit of a... What do we call it?
It was a misstatement on the letters of order.
Which? On the addresses. Your addresses or the...
The address. The change in conditional use is at 1881. And the new conditional use would be at 82 San Juan.
All right. We'll get into that when you explain what's going on. So, conditional use for Arthur Kelly for a cold storage and dental hygiene clinic?
Yes.
Uh, the way we're gonna work this is the applicant will explain what it is they wanna do. We'll take any questions from the public. And once we've exhausted the public's questions, we'll close the public hearing. And the board will get into questions and comments they may have, findings of fact, so on and so forth. So, without further ado, the applicant will explain what it is they wanna do and where and why. The applicant is?
Arthur Kelly. We want to convert part of the old apple stand building to a dental hygiene clinic. My wife Jill is dental hygienist, has been practicing for 30 years.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's... She's been wanting... She's an independent licensed dental hygienist. Uh, and she's been wanting to establish her own practice. The sales part of the old apple stand has not been carrying underneath the carrier. But yeah, so we thought we would convert part of the building into a dental hygiene clinic. And keep the part that has the walk-in cooler in it, because we still would have that going forward. Uh, in conjunction, uh, we're hoping to get the permit to build a shed type building mode where we pick your own apples. And we can... We operate Pick Your Own every day over there. Sometimes there's a salesperson to help, sometimes there isn't. But, uh, we'd like to have a place to heat bags, put picnic tables, uh, maybe have a cooler with some cider in it, so we can still get cider. So, kind of two-part proposal.
All right, um, do you wanna explain what it is that's gonna be going on inside the dental clinic?
The aspect of it inside, um... What is it?
Floor.
Floor plan. For those of you that are familiar with the building, we're going to replace the entrance door with a single door. Then we're going to, like, a waiting reception area. Um, and then the arboretory would be to the right of that. So, it would be around the back entrance to the doctor's. And we'll put a partition contiguous to the wall that has the apple cider cooler door on it. And that's how we would then split the door.
Uh, anything else?
You're gonna add another door for the entrance to the side that has the cooler.
And the bathroom's gonna be enlarged.
Bathroom has to be enlarged for a handicap.
And insulated and heated.
Ooh, heat, that'll be nice. It's a cold building. Uh, no. So, that's all that you've got to present to us then? All right. Does anyone from the public have any questions? If you do, state your name and then what your question might be.
Yes. Robert Anderson. First of all, I'm not sure where this building's gonna be. Is it the apple building right here across the street?
It's the apple stand building, maybe.
Throw the down on San Juan Road.
No, no, three...
That building right there, that's the one you're talking about? Because I've never been in it, so I have no idea. Now, that has, uh... You said it had bathrooms, so it already has a septic system. It just needs electricity or heat or whatever.
Oh, it's kinda electric and water, bathroom, everything except...
Now, I know when I opened up my business, I had to have a survey done separating that piece of business from my home property. Plus, I had to have 250 feet of its own road frontage for that business. Now, I assume this one's gonna be surveyed separate from the rest of the business? Because it's a separate entity in itself?
Kenny, could you answer that?
Uh, that was before I was here. And it's common to have multiple uses on the same parcel. Uh, the ordinance is going to require each principal use of a building to have the equivalent amount of acreage and road frontage per use. And I actually forgot about the cell tower on his parcel. He's got 63 acres there and three... Over 3,000 feet of road frontage, which would allow him to have, um, 12 uses at least on the parcel. So, he's got the apple stand, the proposed dental, the cell tower, and the residential would only bring him up to five. So, he'd only be halfway on his limit road frontage wise.
So, that five would have to be along Route 109 then? Can't have it somewhere else. The road frontage's gotta be where the business is, right? The 500 feet. It's on the same parcel.
The road frontage, Bob, you know where that pond is on San Juan Road?
Way down the hill?
Yeah.
Yeah?
The road frontage is from just this side on San Juan, continues up to the corner here, goes along 109, and then continues on San Pedro.
You have land there for sale? A sale sign on the land on San Juan Road by any chance? I thought I saw a sale sign over there.
That's the next property.
Oh, that's the next one over there.
Yeah.
So, knowing that you have all that though, but for the business out front here, you would have to have 1,000 feet right here on 109 though for that business, right? Because you have two businesses there? Uh, I'm sorry, 500 feet. 250 for each business? Is that what you said, Ken?
He's got, uh... I just scaled it with the maps online. 1275 on San Juan, 1400 on 109, 400 on San Pedro.
Yeah, so he has enough on 109. That's where the business, the road entrance is gonna be in and out?
For the dentistry.
Yeah, where the road is now.
It's an existing drive right now.
Yeah, it is. Okay, I wasn't sure how that ordinance went on separate businesses.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes.
A Bonnie Pike. I own Acton Family Dental. And is this a nonprofit? When you call it a clinic, so it's a private practice? Will you be operating part-time, full-time?
Depends on how busy I'll be.
Have you done demographics for your business plan?
I'm in the process of doing that.
Okay, um, I have. And if you're interested in some of the research, I'd be happy to offer that to you.
Great, thanks. Yeah. I'm working with Gordon Hall.
Yeah.
Gordon, is it Gordon Hall?
From Sanford?
No, Gordon, uh...
Tele from the state.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
I know who you're... Yeah, yeah. So, I just wanted to offer you that. I don't know, um, if... And this is something the planning board might be interested in. If the demographics will show that the population, um, the amount of residents, will sustain to dental practices.
Anyone else with any questions? Nobody else from the public, any comments, questions? All right then. We'll close the public hearing portion of the hearing. And, um, anybody on the board with any comments or questions? Anything to be clarified?
Is there... Is there a second exit? So, have I one entrance? Is there an emergency exit? Do you need to get out from the side as a...
Yeah.
Yeah, like, do you need to have two exits?
You're talking about in the... In the dental office, right?
Would the exit past the cooler serve as a secondary ingress is another question?
Yeah.
And do you need a secondary?
There could be.
Was it... Were you planning on having that wall between the cold storage and the dental office? A solid wall or was there gonna be a...
Well, we're initially thinking a solid wall. If there needs to be a second...
No, there's gonna be a door there.
This is what the plans are.
There is a door in the plan?
Yes, it's just like a wall.
There's a door in the plan.
So, it's got... It has another way to get out there. If it needs it, if it's... I have no idea where... What the code says about that kinda stuff. We'll have to find out. Are you thinking about just one chair in there?
One chair.
And one person?
You. One person.
Gotcha. And so you don't... Do you have any idea what your hours? You would like to have your hours or what they might be or what days you might?
Um, I'll just depend on when people are available to come. I'll work anywhere from two to five days.
Just weekdays?
Or one day or whatever. Uh, I'll work anytime.
What are you thinking, Mike? I mean...
Well, not someday.
You would be available from Monday through Friday from nine to five or...
Sure.
'Cause see, at some point, we may look at the... If the, you know, depending on how far the process goes here today, we may figure what kinda hours we'd allow you to operate, you know? Or we'd say you could operate within, you know, X to X on so many days. We'd have that type of deal. So, I just wondered if you had idea yet. You know, but if you're planning on being available Monday through Friday, eight to five or whatever, then that's what we would use. But, you know, so you might wanna think about that for when we get to that point in the process.
So, I could say that I'll be available from Monday through Friday from nine to five and Saturday mornings and... But it might not be.
Right. You wouldn't have to be there, but these are the hours that we would have on the permit that you could operate.
Oh, okay. Well, I might have evening hours too. Depends on what the...
Then that's something else that we'd wanna look at too. Just so that, uh... Yeah, just it might be a condition that we put on the permit, that's all.
Okay.
So, one person, one chair. Doing what exactly will you be doing there?
I will be cleaning teeth.
Just?
Well, no.
Or?
Everything I can do. I mean, whatever is needed by the patient. I mean, I'm...
X-rays?
Well, we'll see how that... Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, no. And we'll see if I can afford it.
Rupkanals?
Uh, no. You know, I mean, the typical things, I mean, sealants, fluoride, you know, scaling, replating, regular, uh...
Not filling cavities?
Not filling. I can do temporaries or recent crowns or, you know, patient ed and all that. No, I won't be drilling and filling.
Right, gotcha. Uh, anyone else with anything? Where were we with the septic? We were talking about it last time. And, uh, did we think it was gonna be big enough for the...
It's based on 110 gallons a day out there. His original was for, uh, two to four employees out there. Converting it for dentistry, they're looking at 80 gallons a day plus five gallons per patient per day. But I think hygienists, they were coming up with new loads, which are actually a little bit low, but I don't have them. That's what I was checking earlier. I don't have those new calculations.
But it falls within the framework of what the septic...
Correct.
Is rated for. Um, oh, any type of hazardous waste at all? Any blood goo, stuff like that?
Well, that's gonna go down the drain.
All right.
Blood and saliva.
No, uh... Nothing else like bloody cotton, that kinda stuff jamming in cheeks, you know? No, no, that's not...
Well, um, not really, 'cause I just... I suction and I... I'll have evacuation and...
Right, right.
And water and, um, I'll have a compressor and a vacuum and that'll go right into the septic.
Gotcha. I can't think of anything else. All right, well, uh, what do we want to go from here? Do we want to continue the conditional use permit process? Do you need more information? What's going on with that?
Are we talking about just the one building or both of them right there?
Well, that's right, the other building. Let's bring that... Well, I think we're talking... We're looking at two, correct? On the one permit, change of use here. And then a new building over by the, uh, the pick your own where the pick your own is at.
And it's under one permit, okay.
Yes. Any questions about that building over there? I forgot about that. What was the size of that again, our time for...
It was gonna be the footprint was, you know, it's gonna be like a shed. It would be 12 by 20 with an eight-foot porch. So, it would be a footprint of 20 by 20. It would be excavated out, put some gravel in and some peystone on top of that for a 26 by 26, not a pad, but, uh, to set the shed.
Right, right.
And that would then, you know, runoff from the roof would hit the peystone.
And it's gonna be a permanent structure. It's not... It's gonna be sitting on top of the ground or on some, you know, some, uh... Sitting on the peystone.
Right.
Pressure treated. Semi-combing, I guess it's. And is only gonna be open during the pick your own season? It would...
No, it'd be open probably beyond that for people to come and...
Oh, you mean kind of a self...
Late fall. Yeah, probably some self-service.
Cranberries. Parking's okay over there?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a grass parking area. Seasonal use.
Uh, does he have... Does he have to set aside any extra parking places for this building or...
For the pick your own?
Yeah. Or do you think people just go in there and park, pick some apples, then walk into the store and grab, you know, cranberries or whatever?
The formula for the size of the structure doesn't really calculate very many spots. Few at best, and he's got a large enough area there already. Most of the people are going to be out picking versus there at the store, so... How many have you had before at once?
Um, most we've had there at one time is probably, I don't know, as much as eight cars, maybe. Sometimes they park, you know, right in that grassy area. And then other times, there's room to park. There's that road up through the middle of the orchard. There's room to park along there. You know, there's no marked spots.
Right.
Fairly typical, you know, pick your own apples.
Anything else? Yes. I was confused about...
Yeah, this has to do with this one now. For some reason, I thought you said in the beginning something about cold. Did you say cold?
There's a door that'll be used for... Cold storage, a walk-in cooler.
Oh, okay. You sound like cold, like you're gonna sell cold from burning. You gotta say, okay, what did you need or think of that? Oh, so this is just gonna be a, like, a store?
There's a walk-in... There's a walk-in cooler there. It's not even so much as a store as it's a place to get out of the weather a little bit. I mean, right...
The new building, the building over there, that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah.
That's gonna be...
It's more, it's... It's a place to get out of the weather, pretty much.
I thought you said cold, well, okay. I missed that.
Yeah, he's talking about there's a walk-in cooler in that building. So, we'd wanna use to put apples and...
All right, well, uh... Anyone else with anything? Is there a motion to maybe look at the... Continue the process, look at the findings of fact for... Or what you guys want to do?
We'll do it separately for each one, right?
Uh, yeah, I spoke... Well, I don't know. Now, we could... It's one permit. We can probably ask... We can probably ask a question and decide if both buildings meet, you know, meet the criteria. So, we wanna go ahead and look at the findings of fact?
Is there like a sketch or something of the new building in there? Is it already covered?
I think Kenny might have, uh... I located it. I don't have a schedule.
But this is the 20 by 20, yeah.
But it might be a few jobs. 12 by 20 with an eight-foot porch on front.
Is the porch gonna be covered? Yeah, heard it. Okay.
You know, what do they call it? A hinge roof, a broken roof? So, there'd be a peak and then...
Yeah. Yeah, like a shed roof coming off over the deck.
Yeah.
What's the distance to that pond or...
What's the neighbor's pond?
Yeah.
Well, you gotta go up over that hill from there. It's like a...
Well, it's at least 500 feet.
Yeah, it's quite a ways.
And you're thinking like right where the cash box is really? Like, corner that...
Or just go way up to the orchard to get rid of that.
Kinda where you come into the pick your own area, right?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's look at page 85. 6637, standard applicable conditional uses. Would anyone like to read these? Oh, I see a hand raised. And if something's... See, if something's not applicable, just...
Oh, I need to put paper... Use will have no adverse impact on spawning ground, fish, plant of life, bird or other wildlife habitat.
I'd say NA, huh?
What'd you say?
Anyone have an issue with that? I don't think that's really applicable to either, uh...
So, is it NA or...
Yeah.
Say that out loud to me.
I thought I did.
I'm sorry. My ears, guys, I've aged. In the last three months, I've aged about 60 years. I cannot hear, I cannot see. Use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
Probably NA, drop off of them, huh?
Okay, yep. Use is consistent with comprehensive plan.
Small business in agriculture, I think it's right up there, yeah. Anyone have an issue with that? Yeah, okay.
Traffic access meets standards contained in ordinance. Traffic congestion addressed in accordance with ordinance performance standards. I have performance standards.
All right, the driveway for the existing building is all been set by... I mean, it's been there for a few years. DOT is fine with that. There's no issue with that. Sight distances. How much?
600 feet.
More than, uh, more than we're needing.
It'd probably be less traffic. There probably will be less traffic than we would normally have on a Saturday or Sunday.
Right, that's true. Yeah, all right. Um, and the other end, where the pick your own's at? What... What are the sight distances for that drive offhand? And there again...
The sight distances coming towards 109, uh, probably, I don't know, 500 feet maybe? Going down San Juan Road, it isn't so far. I would guess it's more like 150, but I hadn't measured it.
But now that's a... Again, it's an existing drive. It's been used for, you know, X and Y years. And it's only basically busy during the pick your own season, right? And then for now, it'll be for, what, an extra month maybe? I mean, um, does code enforcement see any issues with that road access?
No.
Traffic getting out of that road? Which again, probably won't be a whole lot more than you're getting now.
Nope.
You don't think?
Yeah, away from this side, it's really clear.
Looking this way. See, it's looking the other way.
Yeah, it's coming down the hill. You kinda have to know it's there, but it's not like there's an opportunity for... It's not like you're gonna come across a scanning vehicle that's just sitting there with its blinker on.
Have there been any issues with that drive in the past? You don't have anybody, any close calls, any kind of...
No, no, it's only... You can see pretty well coming towards it, but it's going out that you can't see quite as well. But if you're coming up the hill, um, you can see, like, from the other side of, uh, of Yen's house.
Right.
But when you're looking down, you can't see quite so well.
Ken doesn't have an issue with the drive there? Does anyone else on the board have a problem with it? We're all set then? So, that's okay. What's next?
Sight-to-sight performance with all municipal flood hazard regulations.
Uh, is it in flood zone at all? Nope.
Adequate provision for disposal of waste water, solid waste.
Uh, the septic is not an issue for the dental shop. Uh, let's see. There'll be no hazardous waste. Wait, did we get to that one yet? Oh, solid waste. Solid waste is gonna be handled how out of this play, out of the dental office?
There ain't gonna be very much, I'm just...
Goes up to the dump. It's just ordinary garbage. And will there be any... Will there be any water at the new little store?
No.
No?
No, it's probably...
There's a town right nearby.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's two toilets and washrooms in the farmhouse. Um, they're available. We make the porta potty out there.
All right. But, um, and there's... So, there's no, uh... And there's no solid waste coming from that, the store then? Old apples, what, you have tons in the woods?
No, I mean, other than, uh, you know, cartons that the bags that we use for the pick your own coming or something, carton, or now we're all just going through.
So, they don't... All right. I think we're all set then, all right?
Adequate provision for transportation, storage, disposal of hazardous material are made.
There's not gonna be any hazardous material, so...
Yeah, and Art, you said last time too, that even if it's x-rays, it's not like it's more digital. It's not like...
Yeah, no, yeah, there's no chemicals or anything. It's digital x-rays.
And right now, that's not even an issue yet anyhow.
No.
All right.
Stormwater drainage for 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties are disallowed.
Um, the footprint of the existing store doesn't change at all, correct? And the new place is gonna be built, you said, on pea gravel?
Yeah.
So, that any runoff is gonna drain right there? And you're... It's not gonna be on the road necessarily that goes up there, right?
No, it's, um... When they... When they put the cell tower in, they ditched the road that goes up into the orchard.
Yeah.
There's ditches on both sides of that.
And where's that runoff go?
That ends up, uh, there's a little bit of a water, there's a culvert. You go over a culvert.
On your property?
Yeah, there's a little bit of a waterway that's seasonal, um, and then if there was a heavy storm or something, it ends up going down into, uh, I think it goes, it goes to that, it ends up in that brook. Let's see, it goes across and then down San Warren Road, and I guess it goes into that pond.
Ken, do you have any issues with the, the stormwater?
It's, I haven't been out there since the spring or so, but it was fairly well stabilized from the cell phone installation.
It's, oh, yeah, it's rip rapping that, in the ditch.
I have a question, a little comment.
Uh, well, unfortunately, well, okay.
I live next door, I'm at Snae, but down on San Warren Road.
Oh, okay, yeah.
With a pond.
Yep.
And I've never had a problem, I, as a matter of fact, there's a little dam there.
Alright.
And I control the dam, that's on my, out of the property, so I raise lower the water level as needed for the winter, the summer, whatever, you know, so the pond doesn't overflow the road. And I've never had, I've been there three years and have never had an issue with flooding or, or anything else, so as far as I'm concerned, I'm good to go, whatever he wants to do, I'm good to go with it, it's never been a problem.
So big snow melts?
Big snow melts.
Big rains?
Never been a problem, as a matter of fact, um, oh god, the road agent, Dave.
Winchell.
Winchell. I actually gave him a key to the dam, so if, cause I work down in Mass, and if there was ever an issue with the water level, he's got my authority to remove the boards as he sees fit, to drop the level of the, the pond if it should be a problem, but I'm pretty good with keeping my eye on it.
Alright.
So.
Alright, good, well, that's good to know, thank you. So I think we're all set there, huh? Were you happy with H? Okay.
Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sanitation.
Again, there's no, no change at the existing store, and the new place is gonna be built to whatever standards, code enforcement, uh, whatever the code is, and again, the building's gonna be on gravel so that uh, anything running off the building drains right into the ground. Alright, Ken? Cool? Okay, good.
There is adequate water supply for demands of proposed use and fire protection.
You've got a well here at this place, right?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be enough for, uh, what needs to be done?
Some trees are built.
Okay, um, and the water supply at the other place, there's a couple of outdoor spigots and you have running water in the houses. And bathrooms in the house, which is available to people using the pick your own, um, more of the sales help. Ah, sales help. Well, yeah, right, that's pretty much what you really needed for it, aren't you?
Yep.
Yeah. If you put a porta potties, those would be for the seasonal, for the pick your owners? Alright, are you happy with that? Looks good? What's next?
Provisions for buffer strips, onsite landscaping adequately protect abutting properties from detrimental features of development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust odor. No new noise is what I would say, NA.
Right. Sounds good to me, and the, the new little store is gonna be, you know, no different than what is in either now, right?
Yeah.
Just pick your owns and people pulling in and maybe buy some, I don't know, cranberries? Alright, that's good, what's next?
I don't know, maybe you should talk to your New Yorker, Brent Barry.
All ordinance performance standards applicable to proposed use will be met.
Yes.
Archaeological, historic resources designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected.
Is there anything of archaeological value up on that property that you know? Besides the cell tower?
Nothing new's gonna be excavated.
Right. So, again, probably NA.
Yeah, no excavation.
Uh, now, would we like to, uh... Do we wanna, let's address these first. Now, let's see. I guess, well, we can do a couple different things, we could, somebody can make a motion to approve the conditional use permit uh, with the following conditions, and then we can go into the conditions, or we can discuss conditions first, and then make a motion, whatever you, you know, whatever you feel like.
She's split. She saved the deal.
Right, well, I mean, previously, we addressed, for the other business like this in town, we addressed, um, hours of operation, if she was going to have an x-ray machine, she was gonna contact code enforcement and show that she has state approval and, you know, let us know what's going on with that. And the other one was...
Two, two ways out.
Um, no, it was, if, if she was gonna expand, she was gonna notify, uh...
Oh, because she was gonna, yeah, the chair.
Code enforcement, yeah, she was thinking about that.
Oh, yeah, that was the second one, that was the second.
And we're just, we're just, yes, that's why, it was because of the septic issue. But this one has had a septic, it's gonna be just the one person, so there's probably not an issue with this. Because we put hours of operation in the other store or the other, uh, business, we should probably think about doing the same for this. And, again, if she's gonna somewhere down the road get into x-rays or something, I think we'd wanna at least know that, you know, she's got state approval for that, blah, 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 the code enforcement help. We're thinking of a couple of conditions for, uh, the dental shop here. One would be some type of hours of operation, because we set those as a condition to the last place. And if somewhere down the road you decided to get into x-rays, uh, code enforcement would have to be notified that you were gonna do this, and we'd have to know that you got state approval or whatever hoops you have to jump through for the state to take x-rays of people's teeth, alright? So that's what we're looking at now. And I think hours of operation is, is the thing that's maybe hanging us up a little bit because it's really all up in the air.
Well, I'd just say...
What would you be comfortable with?
And I probably wouldn't be there, but let's say eight to eight, Monday through Friday, and eight to noon on Saturday.
Alright, and these would be the hours that you could be there, we don't hold you, hold you to that.
Right.
But the permit says that your place can be open from this to this.
Does that have no effect the orchard hours? I mean, if she's open eight to eight, does that mean we have to be, going back and forth from eight to eight? Because those aren't our hours. Our hours are early in the morning at the cooler, at the cool.
Well, no, that's a whole, I don't think.
So, does it have no effect at all, or, or the hours, is it the hours of the building, or is it just the hours of her business?
It's just, it's two doors.
Hours of the, the business for the one dental hygiene shop, and as far as the... The pick your own is already an existing business, and all you're gonna put there is just a building, the house, the staff, basically, and all the cranberries and apples. So, I don't know that the hours of operation are so, um, necessary for something like that, you know? I mean, I would imagine that place would be open at least as long as the pick your own, and then maybe for some time afterward.
We advertise the hours for the pick your own as nine to five, seven days a week, seasonally.
Seasonally, bingo, we're all set. We say the same thing for this and throw in seasonally. And, you know, seasonally being as long as the, the help doesn't freeze to death in the unheated building.
Well, I don't think that, I mean, when we ask somebody for hours, we're just asking about their hours of business, we're not asking about if they stay till ten o'clock at night, working on the books, or...
Right, right, but, no, no, no.
You know, that kind of thing, it's just hours that they're avail, doing.
Right. That they'd be open for business.
Chip over the hours that, um, of the conditions in the first, uh...
Same thing.
It was... That makes it easy with their...
It was eight to eight, Monday through Friday, eight to noon Saturday.
Perfect.
And, um, whether we wanna worry about hours for the, uh, for the shed at the pick your own or not, or not even address it?
You know, it can be out there with the tarp.
Picked it, no.
Oh, yeah. Or go by what he just said.
Seasonally, yeah, we, they said we advertise.
Seasonally.
Alright, and we can put that as, as the second thing, is the, uh... What do we call, is that gonna have a name for it, that shed up there, are you gonna, what are you gonna call it?
P O I O.
Pick your own?
Nothing, just...
Just the shed?
Nothing.
Well, we've already got a shed in town, we got a Yen's in the morning.
It's just gonna be there.
Hard steps.
Oh, yeah, hard steps.
It would probably be called the new stand.
Ooh, the new stand, I like that. Or just the stand?
Well, yeah, it looks like a stand.
Yeah, right.
Really, there's gonna be a shed.
Well, we already have a shed now, we gotta give it a different name, we should, shed number two? Uh, I suppose we could, the shed at the pick your own, uh, what's that called? Place? No. Anyway, I don't care.
Booth?
Booth, fine, the pick your own booth, ooh, no? We don't have to worry about that, if you want.
The porch, we know.
Porch.
The porch, ooh, I like that. Seasonal hours at the pick your own porch, good. So we've got eight to eight, Monday through Friday, eight to noon on Saturday for the dental shop. We have, uh, contact Ken when she rec, if it wants she receives state approval for an x-ray machine. Anything else?
Can we make sure the door is in there, as a condition?
That'd be in the plan review, we have to build a permits.
Yeah, yeah, that would be.
The other condition was it's basically just one chair and then a one employee, one...
That, that's all it's gonna ever be.
So we don't have to...
Easy, easy condition.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about that. One chair, no waiting. Alright, anything else? So what are the conditions we've got there?
Yes, hours of operation for the dental clinic will be eight to eight, Monday through Friday, eight to noon time on Saturday for the, uh, pick your own.
Porch?
Facility porch. It's nine to five, seven days a week, seasonally, and, um, the applicant will notify the code enforcement office if the x-ray approved by state, and one chair, one employee.
Yeah, because that's all you're ever gonna be, so we may, we can put that in, what the heck. Alright, anything else? Touch all bases, everybody happy? Art doesn't get the votes, alright. Both of you guys have voted, yeah. Um, so, if there's a motion, we'll have something to vote on. Yes?
I'll move that we accept the, uh, we grant a conditional use. Pretty conditional use, perfect, thank you, with, with the following conditions that we're just ready.
Alright, uh, is there a second? Any comments, changes? Further anything? Alright, then all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, nay? It's a done deal. Congratulations, both of you.
Thank you.
Another small business, woo-hoo! And good luck. Yeah, I just went to the dentist and I got my tooth cleaned, I need a damn word, kinda, I was bummed.
Have it both.
Well, I was thinking about that, but I've got a hole on the other side, so this is the side that I chew on, so if I pull it, I'll pull the S L S, I'll pull them all in. That's what I've always wanted to do, my grandparents said teeth in the jar, and that was great, you know?
Uh, just a comment, I noticed in the advertisement in the paper about the planning board meeting, but they never explained what it was for. They had his, Kelly's Orchard, and that was it, but maybe they could put in there what exactly was the planning board meeting at Kelly's Orchard, they didn't say that. So, other people might wanna come down and explain what it's about, just something I saw in the paper.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, have a good one.
Since it's back voting, I'm gonna head new building.
Oh!
Maybe, I'm thinking that was baked, because I was like, good.
Really? Wow, shoot, I didn't know that, fine.
Oh, no, I've done so well so far. You don't, you're playing a game.
Take care of yourself.
Better.
Hopefully, we'll see you in two weeks.
I have, been worse this week.
When did you get it, though?
Saturday.
Really?
Do you have knowledge?
Do you know if it's the flu flu, or what?
No, it's not, he said it was an upper respiratory thing, I mean, like, the cough.
Mean it's other? I had a shot, which means I'm susceptible to any other.
Never really went into a cold, you know, it was just right here, I thought I had fluid in there, and that's why I went, and I did, I said, if I ever had fluid, I can't get my, I don't know.
Well, hey, take care of yourself, thanks for showing up. That's all I deserve.
Take care, it's twenty years, that's a killer.
So do I have to say?
Yeah.
So you're heading home too?
No, no, we're almost.
Ten minutes, I count.
What do I, just put down here?
Yeah.
I could be easily, but no.
Alright, next thing, scrub all of this draft. Review final vote, final vote, and article four, oh, man, it'll all just be done tonight?
Yeah, it does. It has to be all done.
Nah, this is new rules.
I think a motion leaves.
This, this is all as it was done last week.
As, as far as I know.
As we clean everything up. Well, here's the deal, we can vote on, we have to vote on it so we can get the process going, because there's all kinds of time constraints.
Doesn't mean it's something still.
No, it doesn't, and if we find that we need changes down the road, or something comes from any of the public hearings, that we wanna add, change, dilute, whatever, we can do that.
So, we're bringing tonight on our intent that we go to this board.
And to start, what? Well, no, that's what we're gonna vote on. No, well, no, what she meant was...
This is our best draft board.
Yes.
Going on this draft.
But, we reserve the right, I reserve the right to change this if we feel we need to.
On your timeline, you have a meeting that is absolutely drop dead, now or never, I think it's...
That's down the road.
Right, so you do have another shot.
When is that?
Uh, it's on the...
The meeting is February seventh.
We've got...
File of...
Fileable February twenty-one.
So that's a month from...
And that'll be after...
After you.
Our informational meeting, which apparently is on the seventh of February.
Isn't that when you want to?
It's me, I don't know.
What's the difference between a public information meeting and a public hearing?
Apparently, well, no, we can't use public hearing.
It's not, because, because then there's all kinds of criteria.
Nah, it's more BS.
Okay, so that's when people would put for their comments that, in order for us to change it, because by second, they would, we wouldn't be able to do a thing.
Exactly, at, at the hearing, it's...
I mean, we could maybe do something, but it seems pretty...
I think I'm...
Yeah, we can do something, if we have to, we can. It's alright, there's no point in having a public hearing. I know, so that's, that's... Yeah. Sometimes the state steps all over itself trying to, you know, overrule us, eh? Not ours.
I don't have a file.
You what?
It wasn't one there?
Was it? It's like this?
Here's the next, did you do one?
Get one of those. Hold it, this ain't a box.
I got Tom. No, I got one.
Okay, Tom's over here.
Is there a motion on this final draft? Do you wanna accept this puppy and start the process? Did I say yes?
I'll make a motion, we sent the, the draft of the July one, and then it did the only thing.
Alright, we'll say that. Uh, any further comments, questions, changes? Between now and our next meeting, which will be the public informational, whatever it is, let's peruse it, make sure that, you know, it is what it says it is. And if we have any thing... And if we have any things that we think were missed, or we wanna add in, we'll bring those up on the seventh as well. Uh, no further comments, questions? Go ahead.
No, I just wanna ask a favor. Can you send me a color coded, is it more than one color gray?
I mean, are they? No, it's all now, it's all yellow.
Oh, so there's not even?
No. The, the, the third draft, have all three colors on it from each draft?
I don't have any draft. I miss, you know, so it's my fault, I guess I.
You're beating me.
No, no, but I need your folder, can you check your folder? Yeah, no, I have it, I have it. It might be.
Oh, it's, it should be on there.
Okay, I hope so.
No, I'll give you one. Because, no, I'm all set to vote on this. I mean, I'm all for it. I just don't remember how we decided. The only biggest conflict I can remember, not conflict really, but when it comes to calculating the phosphorus, is that a whole second procedure, or is that part of the?
We open the.
The regular planning, because that's the only part that I never get to fit in. Uh, is this just rediscussion now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
No, 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 we, we, we made a motion, so now we're discussing.
Ah, I'll forward that, I'll forward. There's a, there's an asterisk, Jessica, at the bottom of that cable.
Yeah, and we changed it to say that to be updated.
Yeah, it can be changed, subject to the most current D E P standards.
And then, uh, the only other thing I can't remember about it, and I, I don't think it was discussed in the last two meetings, because I did listen to those two last two meetings, was who's allowed to figure, I mean, these are just the standards that, so, someone has to calculate this for every job.
Um, if it, if it requires some kind of an L I D, yes, somebody has to figure it out, figure out what's gonna be done. Look, these are software. Well, yeah, but chances are it would be, I'm not gonna do, if I've got a place on the lake, I'm gonna do some expensive work.
The kind of questions that I've had are like, how much phosphorus can you get off of a roof?
There's calculations. I don't think it is. I don't think it's.
It's, uh, it's just based on what's coming from the soil that would be there, so it would be, it's the natural runoff.
From, it's runoff from the site. It's not like what comes off a roof or from the driveway.
So, it's just any additional erosion has to be accounted for in terms of its phosphorus content, in a way. Alright. All the other stuff is so sensible. This is just the one that.
It's complicated.
It's not that it's even complicated, it's just there's a step that if you're saying there's zero runoff, then there's zero runoff. So, this is just sort of like a backup to make sure there's zero runoff. Alright, but we don't yet know how we're really gonna calculate per household.
There's, there's must be some software or something.
Whoever designs the plan is gonna know, and if they're on whatever lake they're on, they know how much, you know, what the limits are.
Right, okay, I, I think I sort of figured it out. I mean, I think in my head I can abstractly work it out.
When, when they did the new cemetery, the Vethun Cemetery down in Springvale, the, the buffer depth, the setback from the Malsen River was determined by to, to mitigate phosphorus runoff into Malsen River. So, it must be some software formula or something that they used to calculate.
Yeah, it's a backup.
Yeah, the web application is this.
Alright, no, it's okay. I mean, in my mind, I can, I have it down. I honestly do. Just seems like an extra step, but I do get it, so I'm all for it.
Alright, I, anyone else with any comments or questions? Before we're ready to vote? Nobody, nothing? Alright then. All those in favor of this latest addition to the, uh, Acton zoning code, uh, low impact development stormwater standards?
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Alright. So far, it's a done deal. Now, we'll have our public informational meeting on the seventh. We can get that posted. And, uh, can you give me like four or five copies so I can pass them, stick them around town? And that'll probably be upstairs, because we may have a few more people than we had tonight. Oh, and this is gonna be available on the website. People are gonna need to peruse it.
Okay.
That we have to be informed. And we'll need some, we'll probably want some copies of this, because it is pretty simple, nine pages. Down here or upstairs, wherever. Maybe a few down here and a few upstairs, because their hours are, are more than yours.
Okay.
They're the same hours.
Oh, they are? Oh, wow. Blimey. Jeez, this is getting at the arid apartment, isn't it?
Regular city.
Well, I wanna say thank you to putting those, putting the, uh, stuff online, because trying to track it on TV is, it's just not in my normal hours. But just being able to sit and look at it, get caught up was very, very nice to have it online, so thank you to the team who put it there.
Alright, so we're all set with that? So, uh, what else we got here for this? Any new business, Kenny? So, the next meeting is the seventh, that's gonna be the public informational meeting for this, and then whatever regular business we had afterwards. Uh, yes?
I think you just have to vote for the, oh, what's going on the warrant, that's all.
That's next, we just.
Oh, you mean we haven't worded it properly?
I'm sorry?
I mean, we haven't worded it properly?
The warrant, the article warrant.
voted on the article for the.
Oh!
It's just that.
Where's that writ?
It's right here, do you favor?
Man.
You want this done?
No, I really, I don't care. Because it's just so much BS.
I don't see how we can vote on something dated February seven.
Do you favor approving the proposed amendments to the blah, blah, blah dated February seventh, two, twenty twelve? Well, that's.
That's the, that's, that's this.
That's gonna be the official date.
No, that's, that's this. That's the ordinance that's in effect right now.
Oh.
So, you're changing the ordinance that's in effect as of that date. So, that's, that's this document.
Amendments to the zoning, oh, the acton zoning ordinance stated, okay. Meeting the latest edition.
Wait a second, that means the whole ordinance is gonna be printed on February seventh?
No.
It's two thousand twelve.
That was two thousand twelve. There must have been amendments to it.
Oh, 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 it's just a coincidence.
Yeah.
Just throwing the base, right off the air. Throwing me off.
We can throw it last year at this time.
So.
Tell you right where we were this.
We have to re-vote, vote on articles for the warrants. Well, if somebody wants to propose a, uh, a motion on that, fine.
What does it tie into, anything extra?
It's some legal schmiedel stuff we have to do.
What you're asking on the warrant is to blend all of this word into this, which becomes this.
Should we put in there to incorporate low impact development or something, so it's more, you do?
I think this. All, all, what this is gonna be, this is gonna be, this is the way the article is gonna read on the town warrant.
Right.
It'll be article number, whatever.
Right.
And, and it's gonna say, do you favor, uh, approving the proposed amendments, which are.
And then are all of these gonna be right in there within the warrant?
No.
No.
There may be copies of this. Well, I don't know if they're gonna include all this in the warrant.
Because I'm just thinking it doesn't really, you don't really know what it's about.
Well, they'll pick up this one, they'll. Because they're available online, thank you very much.
Yeah, because we've been doing this for three years.
Yeah, they'll pick up a copy of it. At, at town meeting, I don't know if we're gonna have copies of this or not, we'll see what happens. You like for, as part, I guess it depends on what the selectmen wanna do, or what the boss up there says they need to do as far as legally, does this whole thing have to be included in, you know, the list of articles, or can we get away with just that title?
I don't know, how have we done it in the past?
We never get any say, we never get any say about how to word the ordinance.
Yeah, really, we haven't. And in the past, when we, when we passed the comprehensive plan, that wasn't included in, you know, the package you get with Article one, Article seventeen, or, so, my guess is no. There'll be copies of this for informational.
And the public hearing, I mean, that's part of the reason we have it.
Right, 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 right.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah.
So, one of us has to make a, a motion?
Make a motion to?
I make a motion to accept as written?
Sounds good to me, yeah.
The article proposed in old business, do you favor approving the proposed amendments to the town of Acton zoning ordinance dated February seventh, twenty twelve?
Is there a second?
Second then.
Any questions or comments, further discussion? All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? That's a done deal. Anything else? Wow. Alright then. So, we'll see you guys this afternoon, and we'll be all set with all the notifications on, I guess.